To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bund.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Thank everyone for coming. I will go ahead and move on to public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity of any member of the public to address the board on any topic. And I do know we have Alderman Franco here from Aurora. I'll invite you up at the time of the meeting when we talk about that specifically, if you want to speak then. And if you are on the agenda elsewhere, you don't have to come up now, so. All right. That will move on to the consent. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of November 26th, executive session minutes of November 26th, building report for November of 2018, accounts payable through December 6th, cancellation of our December 18th committee of the whole, and cancellation of the December 26th village board meeting, ordinance 1830, providing for the abatement of 2018 tax levy for our 2008 series bonds, and then item H is the same for 2011 series bonds, and item I, which is ordinance 1832, is an abatement for the 2013 series, and J is 1833 ordinance, and that's an abatement of the 2014. K is 1834, that is abatement of the 2018 tax levy and general obligation, alternate bonds, series 2017. All of these are waiver of first passage on the second.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
There is 4-0, thank you. Under items for separate action, we have a recommendation of plan commission of PC 2018-020. This is a special use request for PUD rezoning and final plat at the southwest corner of Orchard and Jericho Road, and this is Jericho and Orchard LLC. And the second item, which is first reading, is ordinance 1836, adopting the same. So with that, I'll turn over to Director of Community Development, Rich Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight you have before you an 18-acre site that's located at the southwest corner of Jericho and Orchard Road. We've been working with the Jericho and Orchard LLC, along with Ricky Rockets, who would be the principal tenant of new structures to be built on this site. The request is for a special use for mixed-use PUD and the final plat. The mixed-use PUD would include a gas station, a car wash, a convenience store, a multi-tenant building, multiple drive-throughs and outdoor cafes with the multi-tenant building, and the potential for hospitality use outlot or lots in the property as well in another phase or a later phase. The current zoning on the property includes a large portion of B2 general retail, B3 general automotive, M1 limited manufacturing, and a small portion of the property is zoned R3 residential where there was an old house that's now been vacated and abandoned for quite a while. The comp plan for the village calls for a regional commercial on this property. The zoning request is for all of the site to be a B2 PUD. Phase 1 is the majority of the eastern portion of the 18 acres that runs along Orchard Road. Future phases may include additional entitlement requirements that would come back to the village board for further approval. There is a request for a one-foot setback variance along the Orchard Road portion of the property, and for the car wash portion, only a 15-foot setback variance along Jericho Road, but the applicant has indicated that they will include additional landscaping along that wall, and we've talked to them in terms of no signage on that northern wall along the car wash as well that faces Jericho Road. The request would also include a sign variance to allow for a three-dimensional signage element, no greater than 14 feet tall, which is the maximum height that would be allowed for a multi-tenant site. So that final design has not been worked out yet with the applicant, but is in the works. The request would also call for the, there would be some deficiency in the parking in terms of the square footage that's been shown on the plan, in terms of how many parking spaces would be on-site to start with the development, but the staff is recommending that there be area set aside to the west, or what would be in phase 2, that would be designated and held for the parking deficiency, or to make up the number of missing parking spaces by code, if it's determined in the future that the stores demand more parking than what is being provided. So this would be a reservation held on the plat. It could not be developed in any other form except for parking. So with that, the staff recommended approval, as well as the plant commission recommended approval with the conditions as outlined.
Awesome. All right, I know the petitioner is here?
I don't think the petitioner is here tonight. I don't see them.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're certainly not required to, but if you want to address the board, you can.
One of the petitioners is here and can further address questions if there are such questions. Again, this will come back to the village board. This is just first reading. We'll come back at your next regular meeting in January on the 14th, and we believe that we'll be able to work out all of the rest of the design details that go along with the conditions.
Okay.
I have a question. At this time, do we know where that sign is going to be placed?
Yes, the signs are identified in your packet. It's a little tough to read. You might, no. If you look at the site plan, trustee Spurling, that looks like this.
Okay.
You can see there's little boxes right along Jericho Road at the entrance that's shaded in gray. There's a rectangular box, very small. See that? That's one of the signs.
Here.
The other, when you go down to the intersection, you see a sign down there. That's actually intended to be the location of the village entry monument that we've talked about in the past, so that would be an easement there. There's another sign at, along Jericho Road at the entrance at the far northwest portion, also shaded in gray. The other signage is intended to be on the facade of the buildings, and as I indicated, we're working to have no signage on the car wash. See the proposed car wash on the far north side of the structure, or of the site plan along Jericho Road, so that there would be no signage on that wall that's directly parallel to Jericho.
Okay.
And there would be, the proposal was for a three-dimensional, what they call the Rocket Man or Rocket Boy in the packet, on the roof of the convenience store. Staff's recommending that if that is in place as a three-dimensional element, that it would have to be basically enclosed by an architectural feature, so that it would not be a freestanding, if you will, three-dimensional feature, so.
What does that mean?
If you can picture the Walgreens, basically above their atrium or their entrance into a Walgreens store, there's a glassed area that, there's glass on one side and it's basically enclosed in either building material, or, well, any type of building material, brick or, or, not stone, siding.
Yeah.
So that it's visible from one side only, and it's essentially in a frame or encased in a glass frame. That's the type of element that we're proposing would be acceptable and meet the intent of the sign code.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, if I may. I attended the plan commission meeting, along with many of the other trustees, and I thought I saw or I heard during the plan commission meeting, there's no overnight truck parking? Is that correct?
Yes, that was mentioned by the applicant.
Then on sheet 2 of 9, what is the, in the future development area, there's, looks to be like seven or eight truck stalls?
It's temporary, it's for, it's for semis, as I understand it, but it would not be allowed to be overnight parking. So there would be a time limit.
So they can park there all during the day? What times are considered overnight?
That has not been discussed, so we can include that in the, in the PUD as a discussion point or a condition.
And if a truck driver parks his car there during the day and somehow leaves, how's it going to be enforced that that truck is gone? Is it going to be towed, or?
Again, I think it's something that we could incorporate into the overall PUD agreement.
And who would enforce that? That's not something we would generally enforce.
Well, typically with new subdivisions and new shopping centers, we get a code enforcement or, or traffic enforcement component that the police department could enforce.
Yeah, we do have a form set up for us to enter into agreement, or us being the village to enter into agreements with private property owners to enforce situations such as that.
Chief, do you have better things to do than enforce a no overnight truck parking? Okay.
And I understand the logic, the logic for being there because of, if a truck driver wants to park there and go in and get something to eat, or, you know, you don't want him to stay parked in a stall, I just, the concern would become the overnight truck parking.
Yeah, I just don't see how, it's fine during the day, but, you know, what, does it become against the law at dusk? What, what's the deal, so?
Don't we have that problem right now, like at Walmart and places like that, chief, where they, they park there for extended time, and Walmart has said, "Go ahead and get rid of them," so this would be nothing different, I wouldn't think, if, if they're in the convenience store. I'm sure he's not going to say, "Why don't you get your truck out of here," but if, if they just take an hour nap or something, I wouldn't think any problem with that. In fact, that's probably what a lot of people want to do, and they, they can't do it at Walmart and these other places.
Does the petitioner have anything to say regarding this?
We're the developer representing Jericho and Orchard LLC. Yeah, it is our full intent, and we have other facilities where it's intended to only be short-term parking. We can sign it accordingly, and it is there as an amenity for the truck drivers, again, to be able to park, go get something to eat, not queue up in the fueling area and create problems elsewhere on-site. So again, this is, we've had them where we, we post it for a limited amount of time, and we'd be more than happy to do that.
I think the village's goal is to get those, and I think your goal as well, is to get those future developed areas in the back developed as quickly as possible.
Sure.
So, okay.
How do you plan to market those, sir? What type are you going to market that outside buildings? Is it more restaurant, small restaurant, or as long as it ain't telephone companies? We've got so many of those now, I think everybody's.
For the future retail areas? Yeah, probably, I think the, the vision right now would be the end cap being some type of restaurant, and then some other mixes of retail components in between the two end caps, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Future developed area, if and when that future developed area develops, does that temporary truck parking go away?
No, not right now. We're, we're planning on incorporating that into the overall future development area. Does it mean it has to stay exactly where it is right now? Is it shown on that plan? No, but right now, there's, there's really no definitive plan for that western portion of the site, so again, that was a very convenient strategic place to, to show that area right now.
Awesome. Any other questions for the petitioner?
I just mirror what trustee Youngerman said, that it's a concern that it not become a quote-unquote "truck stop."
Yes, they're.
Which was specifically pointed out during plan commission, that.
Yes.
That that was not the intent, but just so that, you know, we're all clear, because again, I think for the residents that live on that side of the property, that that's going to be a large concern.
Right, no, and there are no, there are no truck stop amenities in this facility, such, you know, you see laundry or showers or things like that, this does not have those. Again, this is short-term, fuel, grab a bite to eat, if you do want to maybe close your eyes for 30 minutes or an hour, I think that that's something we would encourage as well, but again, it's, it's absolutely intended to be short-term.
And this looks like, if I'm just measuring here, it's at least 250 feet, maybe not more, from the Jericho right-of-way, so maybe 300 feet from the road. It's pretty far setback, which is helpful. What are, what's the board's thoughts on the signage?
I understand from a marketing perspective how the Rocket Boy, is that the correct term?
Yes.
Is definitely part of their shtick for what they do, and I don't, I don't find it offensive. I'm a little curious about the architectural feature now, maybe if it was glassed on three sides or octagon type of thing, it might be something that's not so, you know, because otherwise you're just really sticking it in a closet.
Yes, and, and we've, we've heard staff loud and clear, and we are meeting with ownership this week to throw out some ideas and come up with something that is acceptable to the village.
And we're just talking about, that's just the one that's architectural.
Be the one on the roof.
On the roof. The one that's on the monument sign is not a problem?
The one on the monument sign because of its overall height at the top of the monument sign is a problem, but what we've talked to the applicant about is coming back with a monument sign that is at the maximum allowable by the sign code for just sign panels, and then secondary to, if you can envision a, a mount or a base where the three-dimensional component could be next to the monument sign, instead of on top of. And that's what they're going to try to come back with.
I think the kids would like that, going to Stewart Baseball Park, that, you know, coming out of Aurora, you go down to the spaceship, take a right at that corner, and rather than look for names, a landmark, basically.
So it sounds like there's some stuff yet to work out that we'll just probably discuss at the January meeting?
I'm, I'm fine with the signage. I have more of an issue with the truck parking than I do with the signage.
Is the, the Rocket Boy on all three of the monument signs?
It was on the two monument signs and then on the roof of the gas station.
Okay. Oh, it's not on the one on Jericho.
I'm sorry, depending on which plan you look at, so I apologize, I believe there'd be three monument signs, one up at Jericho Road with entrances at the northwest, then one that's just down the line from the village entry monument sign.
Yeah.
And then a third one at the, the right-in, right-out entrance further south along Jericho.
And on the.
Or along Orchard, excuse me.
One of the sign plans, it, the only one that would have the, the three-dimensional sign would be at the corner of Jericho and Orchard.
There would be two that would have it, and one does not.
Okay, because that one doesn't. Oh, yeah.
There's a second, there's a second page to the overall sign.
Yeah.
Plan.
So.
It shows the two monument signs with.
Right, so the second, so the one at the corner of Orchard and Jericho would have the, the 3D figure on top. The sign number three on this plan, which is down Jericho, would also have that on top. That one probably concerns me a little bit more than the others. I think as you head down Jericho, you're getting away from the traffic, and frankly, that's right at the entrance, the residential subdivision. That would be the one I would have concern with. The one at the intersection of Orchard and Jericho, I don't, I'm not as concerned with, but. Any other questions?
The one you're talking about, Matt, is where the right-in, right-out is?
No, there's, there's no little man there.
There is, excuse me, there, there is, if you look at the key, there's a number one.
Mm-hmm.
And that relates to the first.
What key?
Signs with, with the three-dimensional rocket at the top. That's at the right-in, right-out. Number two is down towards the intersection where the village monument sign would be, and that's the one without the rocket on the top.
Really?
Yes. And then number three is the one that's on the bottom of the page, and that's the one that's intended to be at Jericho and the entrance road. That's the way it lines up with the code or the key.
Yeah. So I'm looking at signage site plan, which is SI1.
Yes.
This is the plan commission packet. I don't know if it changed since then. Sign number, you know, one, two, and three are different from what you just described.
Well, I apologize if you have the earlier version.
No, it's fine.
The version I have shows what I just described, one and three, Jericho and the right-in, right-out at Orchard, with the rocket at the top, and then number two, sign elevation. I have that down at the intersection.
I get it. So these, these don't coordinate, is what we're getting at. Because the first page.
He's looking at the one with the rectangles on it, not the one you're holding.
So I'm looking at this. The site, the overall site plan and the descriptions in here say, they don't jive with the signage detail sheet, so.
No, it's the, it's the smaller latering on the one you're looking. It'll tell you which sign detail on that following sheet that sign is.
Sure.
Yes.
But the signage key, the description for sign one.
Yep.
Doesn't say Little Rocket Man.
I don't have the sign packet here, if I could just take a quick look.
So that doesn't describe the Rocket Boy.
Yeah, it's, it's this detail right here. So sign one, which is this sign, is going to be detail number two.
You're right, it doesn't match up.
Yeah, so it'd be this sign right here.
So that's this one?
Yes, correct.
So the two that have the figurine are those two?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the intent, anyway.
Yes.
So now I'm not clear which, where are the two, which locations are the two rockets?
Jericho.
Both signs on Jericho.
And then right at the hard corner of Orchard and Jericho.
So here and here?
Yes.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, that's fine. So, yeah, I would go back with the second one on Jericho, as you head down west on Jericho is probably the one I'm uncomfortable with. I just think you're headed down residential way, that would be my opinion, but we can clarify this before the next meeting. Any other questions?
The residence that's there now, the one that's been vacated?
Yes.
Is that, who's the owner of that property?
Well, now it's the LLC owns it.
Oh, okay, LLC owns it, okay, and that's going to be part of the Rochester extension?
Yes.
That's then going to tee to the animal hospital for access, and then.
The animal hospital will be responsive for the payment on their property, but it'll link up to the dead end of their property.
And I think your packet inadvertently, that was an earlier version, we made some late changes on the site plan, the north-south access road, it appears to stop short of the animal hospital, but on the latest plans now, it, it does extend all the way to that property line, so they can make the connection.
Okay.
But to answer your question, the house would be taken out with that extension of Rochester.
Correct, all right. I did, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was owned by the LLC or.
It is.
And is that leg of Rochester and the intersection improvements going in in your first phase?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Alderman Franco, did you have questions?
Yep.
So I'm Carl Franco Alderman for the 5th Ward of the city of Aurora. I represent the Linden subdivision, which is right across the street from this project, and I apologize, I'm kind of coming in late information-wise. I got notified over the weekend from some constituents that this was happening and there was concerns, and they told me this meeting was supposed to be Thursday, so I didn't, I was, wasn't prepared to speak tonight on anything, but, but I do want to say that as with any kind of complex, with any type of commercial development next to a subdivision, there's going to be some concerns. This one briefly was, relates to me, there's going to be some noise concerns, maybe illumination concerns, traffic pattern concerns, so I guess going forward, and I know this is fairly early in the process for everybody else too, is that maybe we can have some dialogue with these constituents to listen to their concerns. I don't know if anybody's here tonight from the subdivision. I got these based on phone calls, because I know that's basically what we all do with our cities, when there's commercial development, what is the negative or positive effects on the community, the residents that are there? So I just want to make sure that at least we listen to see what's going to happen there, and maybe you can inform them as time goes on, what's going to happen, how it's going to come out, what's, what's the timetable on that, so relieve them. I know, like anybody else, they're concerned about property values going forward, so if, so if we can just have some dialogue with them, if I can reference them to somebody to speak to between now and the other, the January meeting, I guess it is, so then they can have better questions at that meeting and come and voice their opinion. I'm kind of surprised they weren't here last Thursday when you talked about it, but nevertheless, I'm going to jump in on their behalf and ask that. So that's really what this was tonight. Sorry for the fragmented questioning, like I said, I wasn't prepared, but if we could do that going forward, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I know you have, or Rich Young has your contact information, and we'll make sure that you guys get connected.
Okay.
And please pass along any comments that, that you have or, or that your residents have.
Okay, great, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay.
And you're welcome back anytime.
Your meetings are a lot shorter than ours, I like that.
Thank you.
So Director Young, to dovetail off of Alderman Franco's comments, the things that have come up in the past for situations like this, the downward lighting and the noise, and unfortunately, I was not able to make the plan commission meeting for once, were those discussed at plan commission? Have those been addressed in the, perhaps, you know, specifically in the lighting plan, things like that?
Yeah, some of it was discussed, the downcast lighting and the improvements in the LED lights, there isn't as much spillage, so they can definitely be directed to the site and, and limit the amount of spillage, if you will, to the north across Jericho Road. We've talked about the signage, that there would be no signage along that wall of the car wash, that's been a request of the applicant. The, the landscaping will be increased in terms of, in terms of evergreen-type landscaping instead of deciduous trees along the south side of Jericho Road. In terms of noise, the car wash will close at nine o'clock each day and it'll be shut down, so there won't be any noise from the car wash, which is across the street, obviously from the residents in Aurora. So I think we've taken provisions that will be built into the PUD agreement to limit the effect for the neighbors across the street.
Okay, thank you.
In response.
Good.
In response to the landscape question, I'm assuming that the trucks come in and they go in the, they go into the entrance that is all the way to the south, and they loop in, and they're facing north when they're fueling up, and then they go back out and back out? Am I thinking correctly, as far as this way?
Troy, can you help me with the traffic flow?
Yeah, there's probably a traffic.
Yes, you are, you are correct.
Okay.
Those trucks will be facing north.
My, my only, and I understand the residents across the street with the semis and stuff, if, with my background, I've got a horticulture background. If we can do evergreens, but not necessarily pine, because as they get older, they limb themselves up, if we can do fir.
Spruce.
Spruce, and also different heights, you know, ranging from maybe six feet to maybe eight feet or 10 feet.
Right.
That will get them some, is that across the street?
Yeah, I just pulled up the, the property along Jericho.
Sure.
On the Lins, is exactly that. It's all evergreens, loaded to ground and not limbed up.
Yeah, after the meeting last week, we, we kind of went back and looked at it too, knowing, you know, if that's a concern, how can we help remedy it? knowing, you know, if that's a concern, how can we help remedy it? And we're discussing right now, we've got to get with the engineers to see if it's just physically possible, but we'd like to try and even do some burming in there too. That's why my next question. Okay. That handles, and that will help with sound abatement as well as noise, or as well as visual. So, okay, thank you.
I think at the planning meeting, they mentioned the lights are down because it's the new style, and also that, like Matt said, some of the close stuff's like 200 feet, 100 yards even away from the road. Now, you're going to have some traffic, I'm sure that you had more. Although most of people go in Stewart, I guess off the bypass, looking at when my grandson plays there, they go off of that road instead of Jericho. But I know the people in the apartments across are Montgomery residents, and they can't wait till you get there because they want a gas station to get gas real quick on their way to work back into Aurora. But, and I also know that that subdivision went in and did not tell Keanlon High School that the subdivision was being built. And all of a sudden, Keanlon, if you get, I don't know if anybody's left here on the board, but we offered them a school property, free land, and they kind of turned us down. Until those people from Kent Holmes, I think is the one that put it up, started sending people to Keanlon saying, hey, we're here. And he said, we don't know anything about you. Where are you coming from? So I know they can have some complaints, but at the same time, the builder didn't do us any good. Let's put it that way.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I'd like a recommendation, a motion to accept the recommendation of Plan Commission for PC 2018-020, special use request.
I'd love a motion. And a second. Go ahead.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
The one last question that I had on this was, the gas station lot is four acres, which I think, I guess just to take a step back, will you be applying for a liquor license? And is it likely that you'll do video gaming in the gas station? Awesome. It doesn't really have bearing on the PUD, just a question that we like to ask, so.
I think your stations, at least you're putting another one in Hoffman Estates. There's one there now, and there's one, I can't remember where the other one was, but they do have liquor and they do have gaming.
We do have others that have gone that route, but it's always good to ask. Alright, so that was just the recommendation. We're not taking action on the ordinance this evening. That'll be on a future meeting in January. If anybody else from the board or the public has comments on this, please send those in to staff beforehand so we can kind of hammer out some of those details and we'll come ready to talk about this under items for discussion at the next meeting. Sound good? Or at a future meeting? Alright. Hard to move on to, so we're not voting on B, and move on to item C, which is a recommendation of Plan Commission of PC 2018-022. This is a special use request for a drive-through and outdoor cafe located in the Ogden Hill Commercial Subdivision. This is the Harry Group. And this is McAllister's Deli.
Correct.
So that'll turn over to Director Young for a summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in the Ogden Hill Shopping Center. If you can envision the vacant lot that's located between the Earth Movers Credit Union and Bone of Beef. At one time, the site was designed and actually underground improvements put in for a car wash, but that project was abandoned. So now we have this request for purchase of the property and the development of a 9,800 square foot building. Could be two or three different units. The largest unit, largest unit would be 4,250 square feet for McAllister's Deli, which would have a drive-through window, but it's not your traditional drive-through window at this time. It's a pickup window, pre-ordered online or by phone. Orders that pick up would be get in the queue and then pick up your item. So it's not ordering on-site, if you will. The overall property is zone B2, general retail, and so this proposed use conforms with the regional commercial component of the comprehensive plan. The parking standards have been met for one restaurant to be located within 4,250 square feet of the building. If a second restaurant was to join, there could be a parking deficiency, so that would have to be worked on. But the other three, two or three units could be used for general retail with the parking that's provided on the plan. The petitioner has been working with Earth Movers Credit Union. When you look at the site plan, you'll see that there's a joint access to the spine road within the shopping center that provides an access easement for both Earth Movers and this proposed development. Earth Movers would prefer that the access be separated from their access, and so the applicant has been working on different alternatives in terms of an ultimate plan to provide access to that spine road within the shopping center. We do not have the final design at this time, but we feel confident that we'll be able to work that out with our engineers and their engineers in terms of what makes the most sense for proper access and queuing into the drive-through pickup lane. So again, this is in process and we will have this finalized by the time you next meet in January. As a part of that, on your site plan, there's an indication at the southeast corner of a cross-access close to Ogden Avenue or Row 34. There's a cross-access, and generally, we like to see cross-access between commercial properties, especially in shopping centers. But for the overall flow and the design of how the traffic would move through the Earth Movers site, that may be closed off, and that would be turned into parking spaces. So again, that'll be part of the overall solution on the traffic circulation pattern once we get the proper location on the spine road for the shopping center. The sign code components have been met and are in compliance, and both staff and Plan Commission recommend approval, given the conditions that are outlined with the, working on the design of the access.
Awesome. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Wish to address the board?
The architect for the petitioner is here.
Awesome.
If you have any specific questions.
Okay.
I have one question. The, how the building is set up, would the McAllister's Deli be in the, would that be closest to Earth Movers Credit? No, other end?
No, it'd be closer to the Bone of Beef side of the building. If you look at the site plan, you can see the queuing behind, basically on the north side of the building, of the drive-through pickup lane. And then it comes on the, essentially the west or southwest side of the building. That's the side, and you can see the designation of the line. That's the largest unit of what's identified as a three-unit building. That large portion is what is intended to be in McAllister's. So when you're looking at the site plan, it would be this unit here.
Okay. And it's going to come in?
Here's 34.
Right.
And here's Menards up here.
Right.
Okay, so this is directly across the service drive from Bone of Beef.
And they're planning, the tentative plan for the drive-through then is to come in?
Would wrap on three, or on two sides. The north side and the west side.
Okay, thank you.
They, what was the, I don't remember from Plan Commission, like nine queuing lanes, I think? And we require six?
Yeah, nine queuing spaces, and we require six in the parking.
And that's for traditional drive-through?
Correct.
And this is really just online?
This is less intense in terms of what we believe would be the amount of queuing, and they have this situation. I visited their site in Geneva, Batavia. I don't know, it's on Randall Road over the weekend, and this is exactly what they would have, something similar to that.
So this is like a Walgreens drive-through?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, the one I was at was much further north. It was.
South Elgin.
South Elgin.
No, it's a single lane drive-through.
Yes.
Right, but you don't go and pull up to Walgreens and say, I'll take 10 blue pills and three green pills. You don't order there. You call ahead and, so I'm on the.
Cool.
Well, where do they put their stack in, like at McDonald's? I'm used to driving up something like that and placing an order, but at the same time, one order, three, four orders get done and one don't, and they send the guy, you know, down farther.
Yeah, they don't have that situation because it's all pre-ordered.
I know they're all pre-ordered, but you gotta, I just can't believe that one guy ain't going to get there before his food does. Maybe, maybe they always do.
Well, he might have to get back in the queue, you know? They'd fill the orders that are ready. I can't speak to this exactly, but they would fill the orders that are ready, I believe, and the other guy would have to probably get back in the queue at the end of the line.
Okay.
And pay for the first guy's sandwiches.
We've talked about this with them in terms of setting aside exactly what you're talking about, like you would have at Culver's where you pull ahead and you wait.
Yeah.
They don't have that. They don't feel that they have that situation that develops.
And if they did, they would have to figure out a solution for that.
My wife and I will go in and sit down because that's where we like to do it. But I know the young people nowadays all email everything and credit card everything, and I'm looking forward to just going in there and sitting down and relaxing.
I'll go with you, and you can buy me a sandwich.
Yeah, I did see the emails with Earth Movers, and I appreciate staff and the developer working with them on this for a solution that really works for everybody. I've definitely worked in other communities that aren't as fluid in the process, so while we don't have the final plan in front of us today, where staff is working on several different options currently that kind of works for everybody. So we'll look forward to seeing that in January, and I do appreciate folks reaching out to us. So I don't know if anybody else had anything to add, the petitioner or the neighbor?
I think the petitioner from Earth Movers would like to say something.
Didn't want to call you out specifically unless you were here to talk, so you're always welcome.
Doug Williams, I'm a vice president with the Earth Mover Credit Union. Selfishly, very excited about the project as well. Will definitely patronage the business. Our only concern that we really wanted to address was just traffic flow in and out of our property. As you can see up there, we have one access point in and out of our property. The most recent drawing that we saw included traffic exiting. The proposed building next door would cut across our entrance and exit point. We have a fair amount of traffic that comes into that building on any given day, upwards of 570 transactions processed in our lobby, drive-up, and ATM. So with that being said, we just want to maintain the open dialogue so it can come to a meaningful resolution with us, with them, that's satisfactory for all parties involved. So appreciate everything from the Village so far, and hopefully we can figure something out.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion to accept the recommendation of Plan Commission for PC 2018-022.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That's the recommendation. And then the ordinance, which is item D, 1837, granting the special use is first reading, so we're not voting on that tonight. That'll be on a future meeting in January, so I appreciate everybody coming out. And again, pass any comments that you have along with staff between now and then. Alright, we'll move along to item D. This evening, we have recommendation of Plan Commission of PC 2018-024, special use request for utility-scale solar energy system located at 800 South River Road. And this is first reading, is it, it's not first reading of the recommendation?
No, it's first, it's the recommendation and then first reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, it didn't say that. So we know what we're doing. Can we not vote on the recommendation then because it says first reading on the agenda? We can just vote on it in January, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we're not going to vote on either of these, but we're going to talk about them. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Young for a summary.
Thank you. This overall site is approximately 43 acres that was acquired by Fox Metro. Since the time of the acquisition of the district, Fox Metro Sanitary District and Green Solar Energy has filed for a special use request to utilize a portion of the property, about 14 acres, in a solar array for utility-scale solar energy system, basically on the south portion of the property, the larger track of property that has been acquired. The intent is to generate about 15% of the district's energy needs through the solar energy field, or solar panel field. And the petitioner intends to request state funding under the Future Jobs Act that's in play right now, and applications will be going in in January, as I understand it, for projects to be reimbursed for the cost of the solar installation. The zoning of this property is M2, which is general manufacturing. The comp plan identifies this property as light industrial or business park. So the proposed use would match with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The maximum height of the solar panels themselves would be 10 feet. Obviously, they'd be tilted towards the sun and can be adjusted seasonally, as I understand it. The wind load would be up to 100 miles an hour. And the base would be, I'm sorry, the extension of a gravel drive would be a part of this overall project that's shown on the site plan, which is not up on the board but in your packet, with the request that a bituminous treatment be covered or placed over the gravel so that it controls the dust situation. There won't be a lot of traffic on this property once it's established, but there will be some maintenance component. So we're requesting that the gravel drive be allowed but with a treatment. I think that's it. I know the applicant is here tonight if you have any specific questions. Both the Plant Commission and the staff recommended approval with the conditions on the pavement treatment and the overall maximum height.
And this might be directed towards the petitioner, but you indicated that the panels would adjust as the season. I got the impression that they adjust during the course of the day, during Plan Commission.
Yeah, maybe I have that wrong. I thought it was somewhat seasonal, but I could be wrong about that.
The thing I want to correct is it's 800 South River Street instead of Road.
That is in the application. It's just picked up for the agenda as Road. I don't know why.
I realize that, but unless somebody files something because you got the River Road on the other side of the river and your truck's hunting.
We'll definitely clarify that for the next agenda and for the ordinance.
Okay.
Only Denny would know that. Good job. Alright, go ahead.
Hi, Eric Peterman. I'm the CEO of GR&amp;E Solar. Thank you for your time on this application. To answer the question, hand, yes, it is correct. It will, this is actually a tracker system, so it rotates throughout the course of the day. So the panels will start facing east at the beginning of the day, and then they will rotate towards the west so that it's the most efficient system to produce the most energy possible. Happy to take any other questions also.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I just, I want to put it on the record because it came up during Plan Commission that this is not feeding back into the comm ed grid. This is for Fox Metro's use to help reduce their costs, which then in turn gets passed down to the residents because if their costs are controlled, I pay less.
Yes.
Eventually.
Yeah, exactly. That's a great point. So there's, you might have heard or seen a lot of solar development going on because of the Future Energy Jobs Act, which was recently passed. There's a lot of solar development that's come in from outside the state to do what's called community solar, where they pick a plot of land, they put a large solar. where they pick a plot of land, they put a large solar array up, they sell it back to ComEd and then they, uh, make money that way. This is not community solar, this is what's called behind the meter, where it is, uh, situated on Fox Metro's property for the benefit of Fox Metro and in return for the taxpayers. So this, this system is proposed to save about $160,000 per year. So over the course of the system, it'll be somewhere between three and a half or four million dollars that will be, um, cost savings, uh, for Fox Metro and the taxpayers. Yeah, that's a key distinction. Also because of that, the funding was mentioned, um, there are, um, a lot of incentives that come with the Future Energy Jobs Act that start to get rolled out in early January. And we have to have our application submitted, uh, when the application period opens on January 15th. Uh, there's been so much of an influx that they think there's actually gonna be more products available than they have money available, or more products, uh, submitted than they have money available. So there's been talks of, um, actually choosing projects, uh, at random. So, in order to make sure that we get in that, uh, opportunity, it's important to have the approval by January 15th, so that we can submit our application to the Illinois Power Agency for the SREC funding. And I'm not sure if the, uh, I know, Mr. President, the issue with the first reading on the ordinance, i- is it still able to be voted on? The ordinance today and then passed at the next board meeting, January 14th?
So it won't, you won't be slowed down at all? We just won't vote on the recommendation today, which really has no bearing on the ordinance any, anyway? And we'll still take action on the ordinance at the next meeting?
Great, thanks for clarifying.
Our next meeting is the...
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, okay.
So because it was printed this way, we could actually pass the ordinance tonight if it was ready?
Yes.
But we're not going to.
Plan on starting this, like, spring?
So we would have to, uh, secure the funding, which will happen in, um, probably February or March. And then, once the funding is secured, then we would finalize, uh, all the plans and then it would be started probably, um, spring or, uh, early part of the summer next year.
Right now, I think there's a renter on the property that is probably, uh, I know he's, our code people have been down there many times, that he's definitely, uh, in a problem, maybe, did our lawyer send a letter also on that?
Yes, um, the village has been working with them to bring that property into compliance and they'll be coming for the Plan Commission for a special use application in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have...
Hi, my name is Chris Childers, I'm a board member over at Fox Metro and you're exactly right. And we are addressing it and, uh, we're aware of it and we're in lockstep with you to get that rectified. So, uh, we are, uh, definitely addressing that.
I know it's a situation that you guys kind of inherited, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, but we're gonna get it cleaned up, I can assure you that.
Is, is there, is there a plan for, so I can see where the solar array is going and I see the easement on the plat. There's area outside of that, that's, looks like it's, um, north of the array, is there any plan for the use of that for the next? I guess, what's the plan for the use of that?
At this time, uh, there's not a plan, but it is for future expansion, uh, of Fox Metro. Maybe administrative buildings or something like that down the road, but, uh, the plant expansion, as you're aware of, went on south, so that's, uh, right now, uh, there's not a plan designed. And then, one other thing, I don't know if you have flexibility, uh, from the standpoint of passing the ordinance tonight. If you could, it would be helpful, because it, it is awful tight passing it on the 14th of January and then on the 15th it's gotta be submitted. And the reason I say that is because, you know, we're aware of, uh, very high competition in this area. And, uh, we don't wanna get put in that lottery system if something got delayed.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. Steph?
The problem is even though the ordinance is up for, where you could vote on the ordinance, you can't really vote on the ordinance without accepting the recommendation first.
Okay. So no. But it will be on for our next meeting, we'll, we'll make sure that, when is that January meeting?
The fourteenth.
Fourteenth, wow.
But this, um, this, I mean, this didn't slow down what the village's process already was, because the ordinance was up for a vote on the 14th. So the only thing that's different is the recommendation, which even if that had been passed tonight, wouldn't make any difference in being able to...
Do we need to have a special meeting? One, one day in the beginning of January, just to get it done? A five-minute meeting?
I don't, I think before today, it sounded like all three of these petitioners were comfortable with the, um, first meeting in January moving forward.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm open to that if it need, need to happen.
And if, I mean, if we're all in agreement that we would be putting an on consent or something, it would definitely not hinder you guys, 'cause you'd know that you're...
Yeah, we would have all of our paperwork ready to submit, we would just need the, um, uh, the formal documentation from the village so that we can submit that to the Illinois Power Agency.
And that's not a problem for staff to pull that together with the meeting on the 14th, for them to have it for their 15th? Okay.
So is that typically something they could turn around and have available the next day? Yeah. Great.
All right, one question that I did have was, and this has no bearing on voting for this, um, the solar panels that you're, they, I presume that you purchase from somewhere, where are those manufactured?
So, most everything in the industry is from overseas. There are some few American manufactured, um, but they just haven't seen the, the, the volume that the overseas manufacturers have.
I'd heard that like 90% of the solar panels in the United States are made in China.
That's a fair estimate.
Yeah, which is unfortunate, given that we're going to be investing so much in solar, in Illinois specifically, but let the market kinda catch up to that, so...
A lot of the jobs actually come from the installation, the engineering, the sales, business development. So although the specific manufacturing isn't happening, happening in the US or in Illinois, a lot of jobs are coming out of the solar industry because of the, the industry progressing as a whole. So we're seeing a lot more job development from the other areas.
Yeah, that's awesome. And I think we had somebody come propose community solar, like you were talking about before, and the, the meeting was interesting. It didn't go terribly well for them. But in this site, I think it's, it is a perfect site for that, uh, you know, previously contaminated site, but also one that's, um, visual from 30. And so my hope is that folks will see the, the solar array out there, understand, kinda get to understand the, the necessity for that in the future. So I like that it's almost like a higher visibility area, um, so they'll be able to see that and hopefully be promoting solar, which I'm supportive of, so...
Absolutely.
All right, Eric? Point of clarification, this is actually not on the paved property, correct? This is to the south of the paved properties.
That's correct.
That's...
The paved property would stay. And so when President probably was asking about the property to the north, that's the paved property?
No, I was talking, there's a, there's vacant...
Who's talking, the north of the paved property?
Yeah, to the north, the...
The paved area is actually to the south, so the, we're going a little bit to the north on, uh, the non-paved area and then I think there's actually a little bit more section of land to the north, which was, might have been what Mr. President was asking.
Yep. I know that there's a, a resident that will definitely ask me, he feels that there's some, uh, substantial trees along the river there that the bald eagles, I know they nest on the Fox Metro property as well. Uh, he'd be very concerned that those, if they can stay, is there any plan to wipe out all the trees on the property for this?
Uh, only the necessary area where we've identified where the solar array is going. Anything else, I do see the tree line along the river, that would be untouched.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we'll add this to, uh, can we add both items to consent for the January 14th meeting? And if, uh, either of the two other board members object, we'll pull it, we'll put it on for discussion then?
I don't know about McAllister, you mean talking McAllister too?
No, this one.
No, just these two?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Incentive.
All right, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Okay, so that was Item E and F, which we're not voting on, uh, this evening. So move on to Item G, which isn't terribly important, uh, it's our, adopting our tax levy for 2018. Bye, Justin.
Just to, um, let the board know, there have not been any changes since you saw it at the last board meeting. I can certainly answer any questions, but like I said, there, there have been no changes, uh, since you saw it last.
Just to reiterate, no increase in taxes unless your property was not fully assessed. There's not even an incremental increase, which is allowable by law, is that correct?
Correct.
Thought you were gonna do the George Bush.
No, 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 no.
Awesome, appreciate it. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries four zero, thank you. All right, in for discussion, uh, we have the 2019 road program update, Engineer Wallace?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, wanted to first give an update on the 2019 infrastructure road program. It is on schedule, um, you may recall that this year we're using a combination of MFT funds and our, our regular IRP funds or road pro, program funds, which means that we have to submit plans to Illinois Department of Transportation for approval as well. While that's somewhat, uh, routine, it does take some additional time at, um, at IDOT. So, our plan is, uh, right now to submit the week of December 17th, uh, and we do expect to stay on schedule. Uh, we'll be, uh, advertising for bids at the end of January. Uh, our bid opening will be mid-February and then we'll be awarding, uh, on the second meeting in February, which is typical of our schedule and has served us well in the past. The one, uh, area that I did wanna discuss with the board and get some concurrence on is that, uh, we had initially thought that we would include, um, the, uh, bike path program, year two program in the IRP program. But as we got into this a little bit further, um, it became apparent that we're probably not gonna be able to bid our year one project, which is the bike path through, uh, Stewart Sports Complex, uh, because we don't have the easement from Fox Valley Park District in Commonwealth Edison yet. So that program will likely be delayed, it may be, we may get that easement later this year, but, um, I'd like to get the bids for the bike path out early as well. So what we're asking for is that we, um, do year number three along with year number two. So we, we, we'd, uh, put year one on hold temporarily into easements. We do year two, which we had planned to do last year, and then we would do our year three project as well. So we'd do two and three this year. We would bid them as a separate bid package and those bids would come in a couple of weeks after, uh, the road program bids would come in. Uh, we think there's enough, uh, interest in the program and, and bundling it with years two and three that will get good bids. Our concern, we have a couple of concerns, one, we're concerned that if we package it in with the MFT, it's gonna delay our approvals at IDOT and we'd, we'd be worried about that. And secondly, you know, we still have to do plans for year three, because we haven't done that yet. So that further delays our ability to get it through IDOT. So, um, that's what we'd like some direction on, if that's acceptable, that's the way we'd like to proceed, but we're certainly flexible and can do it, uh, a different way if we need to.
So to, to summarize, it seems like it's two different questions. One is not include it with the bid, to do it separate.
Right.
And to do, and the other topic is to do years two and three. Two was, was scheduled for this year.
Two was, yes.
Or was scheduled for this coming year?
Well, two was, was the one we bid last year and then we rejected it, because it was a late season.
Right.
Two gets substituted for one, because we couldn't get the easements for one.
I get you.
So, and we thought by now we would have the easements for, for year one, but we don't. So, we can either proceed just with year two or, uh, bundle it with year three, so we can somewhat stay on schedule and then hopefully, you know, next year we would do year one.
We'll likely see some benefit of scale? By bundling two and three together?
I think we will, yes.
Along with mobilization costs and, yeah. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that as well. Why is it so difficult to get easements from ComEd? Do, do they know how many divisions they have yet? Because wasn't that the holdup with the, the Brian Lane stuff? We got approvals through nine divisions and then there was a super secret division that no one knew was there, that then we had to wait on?
It's a difficult and challenging process, um, I, I cannot answer that question.
And is that, that's ComEd right-of-way, right? Or is it easement?
I don't know, the, it's interesting, they, they own the area, I think, north of 30 or south of 30 fee simple, but I think, I'm, I'm not sure, Mayor, they, they own some properties, um, fee simple and the others, some of them they have easements for, I just don't know which ones are which.
Interesting.
But, uh, it's not, it's, it's just a difficult process.
And wasn't part of it too, with something to do with the easements for the farmer?
Well, that's part of it, the, the farmers had certain leases, um, and the village was prepared to pay crop damage and to, you know, uh, certainly make the, the agricultural tenant whole. But, um, it just, we, we just couldn't coordinate it and we're still working on it. I'm, I'm confident that we'll eventually get the easements we need, but it just takes a little while.
We need to keep working on that, 'cause it sounds like it's gonna take a couple of years to get it anyway. So, when we make the changes, year one is now year three?
Effectively, yes.
We're combining two and three, but we're doing it in one year, because we kinda lost this year.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna be, we're out of sequence, but we'll be accomplishing the amount of work that we needed to accomplish to stay on our five-year plan.
Is ComEd just too big to fail, or if someone just, uh, uh, if, if a government entity asks something of them, they would just kind of, "Well, we don't have to do it, we, we can just sit on it for a while?"
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think we made...
That's what they're demonstrating.
We made some good strides in getting the storm sewer easement, it took, yes, it took quite a while and it was, you know, a challenging process, but we did identify, I think, uh, better contacts and the ability to move things, but it, we're just, it's, it just takes time.
Are we using those contacts that we've got now to try and move this along?
We are.
I appreciate the fact that ComEd is, I mean, they, they obviously clearly do their due diligence, 'cause once you give it up, there's no going back.
Right.
So, I get that they're being very thorough, because it's, it's a lifetime decision that they're making about giving up their easement and, you know, or the right-of-way, so I, I get it.
You can be very thorough, but it, it's also that you're so big and so disorganized that you don't know what the left hand and the right hand are doing. And that's, that's ComEd, that's the, they don't know, that, they've got, I was told, they had eight or nine divisions, we got approvals from all the divisions, and then all of a sudden, there was a super secret division that no one, even people at ComEd didn't know about, that, that we had to get approval from. Is that accurate?
Can't tell you now the exact number of divisions, but there were a number of divisions we had to get...
ComEd doesn't know either. I, I think it's ridiculous that we have to wait and keep waiting and keep waiting and we're waiting for years.
Okay. All right, anything else? I think that's clear direction.
We're good on that, okay, yes, thank you.
And keep pushing on that, keep pushing the farmer. I promised the fourth graders at McDole that that's bike path that's going in, so don't make a liar out of me, so... All right, thank you. Now, itemators new or unfinished, anything? I don't wanna cut you off, I know you got a score to update on.
I'm in, I'm in update, Brian Lane update, as long as we're talking about ComEd. Brian Lane update, please.
It's under construction, uh, their intent is to be done before Christmas.
Except for restoration?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. This is our last meeting of the year, so we'll be meeting January 14th, so have, everybody have a safe and happy holiday and New Year and, uh, no executive session tonight, but that'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.